All right, let's start this meeting. Thank you everyone for showing up. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? Hearing none. I would appreciate someone giving me a motion to accept the November 25 minutes.
I'll make that motion. With the thought in mind if there's any corrections to be made.
I'll second it. Is there any corrections or deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, road commissioners report. Do you have anything you want to tell us?
We're, uh, been with our health officer on an issue we had on East Clanard Road about a septic system and we're between Mr. Griffith and myself. He's actually gonna reach out to a contractor that is working on the project to get an update. Uh, we actually spoke with one of the people that were there, which I don't know if he was actually the owner or the owner's son. And he explained to us that they were in work in progress on that. So we're doing, we are actually reaching out to the contractor that's doing the project.
Is Richard gonna report back to you?
He's supposed to have already reported back to me and I haven't heard from him. So I'm gonna do a follow-up.
Follow-up.
If he hasn't, I'll reach out to the contractor to see where we're at with the project.
All right. If any, uh, if we have any more adjacent landowners come down to ask us questions about it. I can understand there was one individual who came down, who was a neighbor, who came down to your shop down back.
Yep.
So let's try and get the word back to him too.
Yep.
All right.
Cash can give us the warrants. Thank you.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
Any questions for the road commissioner? Moving right along. Uh, warrants are right here if anybody wants to see how we're spending your tax dollars. Uh, John, do you want to be a guest?
Sure.
What's up?
Um, well, I'm here on behalf of the Vermont Country Store that I now work for as of September. Um, for many, many years, uh, this time of year, I'm sure you can imagine is relatively busy for us. Sort of putting it mildly. And for many, many years, we've had folks park out in the circle at the end of Innovation Drive when we haven't had adequate parking in our parking lot, which happens for brief periods of time, like five hours or so during the day when we have overlapping shifts on certain days of the week when we have a lot of folks there. And we were recently sort of reminded that the town now owns that road. We own all of the land surrounding the circle but don't own the circle. And I think that kind of led people to be a little confused about whether that was our property or the town's property or whatever. So we were reminded that it's town property and, uh, what we would like to do is ask the town's permission to use that as temporary parking for brief periods of time between Thanksgiving and Christmas, um, if we need it for overflow. It's usually, I think, maybe eight to 10 cars that park in there during that period of time. It's usually, I'd say, from 10 a.m. to 3:00 or 4:00 p.m. when we have that overflow and need that extra space.
Now, before you speak, um, do those people, like, try to pull off so there's still a lane through there or?
Yep. My observation is that they have attempted to pull off as far as they can, um, to get, you know, to allow people to go through. And I have seen people coming and going out of there with other cars parked. So I think they're doing a relatively decent job of it.
What's your opinion on that?
Well, for one thing, I believe the country store owns all that, but the town actually has a right-of-way of road width.
Well, yeah, our right-of-way exists.
Right-of-way.
Yeah.
Um, the, one of the concerns I have is, and that's, we'll go right back to Matt, there is a fire hydrant at the lowest point of that area. I, that doesn't concern me as much with a big fire pond that's just up the road there. But that's something with the emergency specialists that we have in the audience here. Matt, can you answer that question or?
Yep, and we are going to mark that area and put up signs that say no parking between signs so we have clearance around that fire hydrant. Actually have, I just got the signs in today. So we'll be putting those up as soon as we can.
Yeah, as long as we can get a truck around, if we need to get a truck around it, that's all the Utes Circle.
Okay. Uh, my other issue is if we have snow during the day we're out plowing and we've had, we've ended our day of plowing, the snow has stopped or whatever, and there's snow still left there, I don't feel it's right for the town to have to go out on, like, overtime or extra, or make a special trip to go plow that area after those cars leave. Um, I wouldn't recommend that.
We'd be happy to take care of that if our car, if we have people parked there, we'd be happy to have our plow contractor take care of that.
And if there's no vehicles there, we will maintain the snow out of there.
When we have a snow event, we very often have people who can't make it to work. So usually overflow parking is not a problem.
With that being said, uh, there's your, I don't know who you have to do your parking lot plowing stuff. They have salt and?
They do have salt.
Material on the truck to, okay.
And it's not gonna be an ongoing thing. It's just during the holiday season, right, John?
Right, it's basically for a few weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which can, you know, vary a little bit, but, and it's probably only three days a week when we have a lot of that, a lot of folks there all at once and for a brief period of time. So the odds of a snow event happening at that particular time are not really great. I mean, with this year being the exception, we usually don't have snow this time of year.
Right.
And actually, if this is ongoing, you could look at actually paving that center so the cars could actually park into that center and it'd still leave your right-of-way around the top. That's just a suggestion.
That's long-term.
On the country store, country store side. I don't have in my budget to pave that, so.
Yep.
That's all right.
Will be no problem. If you couldn't plow around the circle, it'll be no problem for you to get turned around down there at the end of the road.
No problem.
Well, okay.
Plenty of room.
Yeah, we'll have you use the parking lot, same thing with the fire truck thing you can get around.
There are parking lots right there in the end.
There's plenty of room. We get tractor trailers around the building, so there's plenty of room.
I figured you could. Just asking.
Any other member have any concerns or is it okay if we, during the holiday season?
With the signs out there, there's a certain distance you need to be from that fire hydrant. That's all.
Yep, I looked them up.
Six feet is it still or eight feet?
Well, I think it was, uh, nine feet in front and then maybe three feet to either side. Maybe you're six.
I didn't know if they changed yet or not.
It's three feet to either side of it. So I was gonna look at them again before I had somebody start counting stakes in the ground. But that's what I remember, three feet to the side and nine feet in the front. The nine feet in the front is no problem because it's down over the bank anyway.
Matt, have you guys ever used that fire hydrant or?
We flow test it once a year. We try to flow test them once a year.
It comes out of the pond anyway, don't it?
Oh, no.
Matt, does that come out of the pond then?
Yeah. Pressurized out of the pond.
We're the last one there and we've got a fire hydrant in front of the building and a fire hydrant in back of the building. So I suspect that that fire hydrant was really meant for anything that might go in.
Additional.
Yeah, in addition, so.
Yeah, well, we're.
Probably unlikely that it would be used, I would imagine, but.
I guess, uh, there's no objection here from the board. Matt's on board. As long as we, you know, protect that hydrant, um.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Moving right along. There's, um. No, I don't think so. Well, you know what? Maybe it would be a good idea. Go ahead.
Uh, I'll make the motion that we, uh, allow Vermont Country Store overflow parking in the circle on, is that Innovation Drive?
Yes.
Innovation Drive, um, with the understanding that if, for some reason, uh, snow builds up, the Vermont Country Store contractor will clean up the area.
Okay.
Any, any time limit, you know, for the month, maybe out in February, February or something?
Well, you really only need it probably.
Thanksgiving to Christmas.
I was gonna say just. So I'll add to my motion anywhere, Katie, Thanksgiving to Christmas.
All right, so a motion by Robbie, seconded by Rick.
Rick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Dave, you wanna sign petitions?
Sure.
That's your prize.
Do I feel like Trump or what?
Take, take mine out of there and put mass name on it.
All right, propane bids for, uh, public comments. Any public comment? Anybody? All right, old business, propane bids for town garage and town transfer station.
Um, so Keizer came back and matched the price for Irving so they can do a dollar thirty-two. And that would be from December 1st of this year till May 31st next year. Um, so there's a contract that you have to sign to update that pricing.
Make a motion that we authorize the select board chair to sign the contract with Keizer Energy with the matched price.
Seconded. All right, is there any further discussion?
Under that contract, I know you said they're matching the price. Are we obligated to buy a certain number of gallons? Is that a quantity thing?
Two thousand gallons.
Two thousand fifty.
Okay, yep, yep.
Right here.
Perfect. Yep. So I'll stick with my motion.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, um, quote for new windows for the town hall. That, uh.
We received one from Cold River Enterprises and then Hometown Construction, but we haven't received a third one from Stallion Hall.
Are you still expecting it?
I called them and I've emailed them twice and, um, he said he would get it to me when it's off the road, so I ain't expecting it. I just want that one.
So I'll make a motion that we table it one more meeting.
Are you getting any other quotes? Are you getting any other quotes?
I, I'm getting three total, so I'm waiting on the one.
I'm gonna call him McKernan.
Okay.
Vice President, Vice President or President lives in Larned.
Oh, does he?
Work at the fire station for us. Give us a good deal.
I'd say we delay it one more, one more meeting. I mean, this, most contractors aren't gonna chew off this project till spring anyway, so it's not.
Then you can get to see that information.
Yeah, I'll get the information.
All right, there's been a motion made. Is there a second? Rick, did I hear you?
I did that.
Yep. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do we notify people that we're, uh, putting it off to one more meeting? So that nobody's left hanging? All right. Tac appointment.
Um, just a formality, right? Dave, Dave and Bob, you're still both willing to do it?
I don't know about Dave. I'll do it.
Dave is. So I'll make a motion that we reappoint, uh, to tac, uh, Dave Potter as our representative and Bob Bixby as our alternate.
I'll second that.
You're welcome, Bob.
Cash. Yes, Bob? Boy, you aren't going. All right, been a motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, new business, extended or extend e-si, e-recycle contract for 2020.
Is it Good Point still? They're just, they just want us to sign on for another year?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the Good Point recycling, uh, contract for e-si, e-recycling for 2020.
All right, is there a second for discussion?
Support Chairman, sign that.
Was there, are there companies out there that do that or?
They are, they are it. They are, they are it.
Okay.
As far as I'm aware, there was one other company that was potentially going to offer a little bit of competition and in the end they, um, opted not to come up to this area. So Good Point was pretty much the only one.
All right, so there's been a motion made, seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I don't see, do you have anything in there to sign?
Yes.
There is?
That's your window, that's one of the windows.
That's the windows, yeah.
That's another window.
Town, Brooklyn Regional Transportation Councils.
No, that's planning.
Yeah, that's.
Is that it?
It's all in order of you.
Uh, amendment rate.
Yep, that's it. Yep.
And it, uh, looks like.
Off eye?
The select board chair.
No, just the chair. So I'll make a motion that the select board chair signs that on behalf of the board.
Okay.
Robin, Rick tonight, what a team. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
It's Bob Bixby. He's about sloppy.
Oops, bowing big.
Uh, adopt road storm water management plan.
Why does this scare me?
It goes along with the MRGP required.
MRGP.
It's like, no choice.
You don't wanna speak on it.
Why? Let's hope you would.
We're gonna have to get you your own personal driver here.
We can actually have a representative from planning commission to come down and explain this if it needed to be more detailed. Um, this all stemmed from all the work we did on the road segments of the sections of roads to classify them and score them and event.
Road erosion inventory.
Okay.
Yeah, this goes along with the road erosion inventory. Uh, and actually, I believe that this has to be adopted by the board by the 13th of December. Is that what this one was?
Just by the end of this year.
Oh, by the end of this year, so. But it does go along with the MRGP, the municipal roads general permit. Um, we likely, you don't really have an option.
Do we have a copy of that inventory of what they're proposing for a plan?
This is all right here.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. And it's quite lengthy to grasp. It's something that needs, you need to sit down for at least 45 minutes just to go through it. They actually lay out the hot points of, uh, water quality on different roads and different segments of improvements. And also what I'm seeing here is it will actually help us to acquire grants for these segments that are hot spots.
So basically, well, so the summary though, they're saying that we only have four miles that are really a problem.
Correct.
And they're saying that out of that four miles, point six of that is what needs to be brought up to standard between.
Two thousand twenty.
Twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yep.
And then another point six by 2025.
Yep.
And then the rest of them, I remember twenty, the rest of that four miles is 2036.
Yep.
So it's really not, I mean, to my, in my mind, that's not that bad.
It's a retirement.
But you do have to continue the upkeep on the roads that do pass.
That pass, yeah.
And, and actually the, the main, and there's diagrams in there, the red, red flags and stuff like that, and most of that is like, uh, Quarterline Hill.
Yep, I was gonna say a lot of this is Quarterline.
Tier Road.
Yep.
Um.
What about your, um, work that you did on Quarterline? Did that help our situation up there or?
That very much improved it, big time.
In their minds though, I mean, they?
They, well, no, they haven't actually seen it yet.
Okay.
But knowing, uh, the road crew is very excited for themselves of the way things have worked out up there.
Okay.
We haven't been up there and had to correct that road since we did put it in that culvert.
Good. Sure looks something different than it used to.
Nor, yeah, normally on a rainstorm, we'd be up there every week with a grater. And we haven't, we haven't touched it. We haven't added extra material or nothing. But the thing is, we need to continue to do the project because.
Yep.
Where we did that small section, the upper part is already carrying fines material into that ditch and eventually after a period of time, it's gonna fill in that ditch and it won't work the way it should.
So our major issues though are on our dirt roads.
Yes.
Yep.
Tire roads don't.
Tire roads really are good shape.
Good shape. I believe like eighty-six percent of the road miles in town are up to par of what the state requires for water quality.
So basically, we just need to, um.
We adopt this plan here. If we adopt this.
Yep.
We can move forward and.
And there's gonna be money for those projects, I hope, too.
This is what will help us get the grants because it shows all documentation's already done, ready to go.
I mean, the fact that it's only got four miles of problems.
That's amazing.
I, I was terrified because I thought for sure we'd have half the roads in town. I mean, that's what I was waiting for.
I'm with you right there.
That's what we thought. That's what we.
Yep.
And actually, I'm very glad that I went with them this summer, spent time with them, and that was part of our end kind for that other.
Yeah, you went and went around with them.
With them. And it made me aware, which I already knew, but it, it learnt me how to, they understand it, how they.
How they look at it?
You look at it and stuff. And basically, it's not rocket science. I mean, we've been doing what they want anyways. And actually, what happened was there's a couple of segments like on Tier Road up by Lanfiers that they requested having, uh, rock put in. And I explained to them that that'd create a hazard if a car went into that ditch and smashed a car out of heck. And once I explained that kind of scenario, they were good with it.
Hmm.
And with, even though.
So we just wanna make sure if this comes up again, you get to go out with them.
Oh, yeah.
Because that, I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah.
You gotta be able to talk to them and you gotta be able to communicate.
Yeah, communication's been key.
We're looking for a motion. Sign onto this.
It's kinda like we don't have no choice.
Well, the thing is, we've already had previously before my turn, a grant to do the road inventory.
Yep.
Do all that stuff. And actually, we met that kind of match.
Did they say anything like blacktopping that hill?
That's, they have made, made recommendations like that. They, their main thing is water quality and controlling the gravel and the material that's on the road to make the water cleaner. That little project we did on top of the hill was quite unbelievable, the response we got out of that. And it took quite an engineer to figure that one out.
I'm not even gonna comment.
Hurt your arm there. Cash, patting your back.
So I'm hearing from the road commissioner, he's recommending that we adopt this.
Actually, Katie went to the meeting, one of the meetings with me.
Feel sorry for you, Katie, but go ahead.
She could have some input if, well, input for her.
What did you hear, Katie?
Um, well, this is warranted by the state, so we have to adopt it. Um, but Cash was explaining that, like, it's important to adopt it because of the upkeep of our roads in Larned and this is helpful plan. And like, with the scoring of each road, it shows like an outline of where you need to go. Stephanie also mentioned, um, like, we can get grants for these projects, but they're matching grants, so the town has to match it. So that's where Cash kinda needed to plan his projects for the spring and summer.
And my question is, if we are adopting this, is it the same as adopting a policy which means then you have 60 days? The warrant holder? Is it, or this is not a policy, it's a plan?
This is a plan and it's like Robert already reading in here, we have until 2036.
To complete everything.
Complete everything. The main projects which are on Quarterline and Tier Road need to be within the next two years, three years. As, as the hot spots.
I entertain a motion to adopt this, uh, plan for discussion, further discussion.
I will make that motion to adopt the road storm water management plan for discussion.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Is there any further discussion?
Well, we signed onto this, uh, make sure I'm understanding this correctly. You're talking out, you're looking 15 years out. Are we tying ourselves into something definite for the next 15 years or is this gonna change or nobody knows, I know, but, uh?
Oh, it'll be like everything. They're gonna fine tune it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I guess probably, maybe that's a good way of putting it, fine tune it. How much are they gonna fine tune it? That's what I'm concerned.
I mean, so looking at the maps, it's all different, different, so you got hydrologically connected segments, um, which they're doing inventory on, uh, conveyance inventory, culvert inventory, and then they've got a berm inventory, which it looks like for the first two, well, it's the same segments that have the problems. It looks like it's a section of Tier Road. It looks like it's a section of Quarterline.
Quarterline.
And then it looks like a section of Gorge Road on one of them doesn't.
Yeah.
Add up. And then there's drainage inventory, which it looks like overall, we're not in too bad a shape on either. It's those same sections. So it looks like once we fix those, especially if you, we fix Tier Road and we fix Quarterline Road, it looks like a vast majority of our problem goes away.
Hopefully.
Mars, did you have?
My question is, are they gonna come out in, say, three years and inspect again and have another holdist?
That's what I would guess.
Well, the, what we, unless they come up a different water quality scenario, we did the road segments which are about 300 feet sections of different parts of road.
But you're gonna always have erosion. You're gonna always have stuff going on. So they could come out if you sign on this plan. They could come out and say, gee, not eighty-six percent of your road is okay, now only 50%.
We got, I mean, we got out of Creek, let's face it. We got out of Creek coming up through the center of our valley. We have the South Creek Road all the way through. You're always gonna have erosion somewhere. And it's a maintenance program.
And this is mandatory, mandatory anyhow.
Yes, mandatory.
Kinda forces a maintenance, it kinda forces the maintenance crew to, to.
This is a lot to.
Do this every year, or check on it every year and stuff like that.
This is all to do with Lake Champlain Basin.
Sure it is.
Oh, I don't.
I don't. On water quality.
Did you have a question?
That doesn't include the Gorge Road over here, huh?
Yes, it's on there.
Look at 2036?
It wa, yeah.
Oh. That has nothing to do with the damage that's on the Gorge Road at this time.
No, that's not happening with it.
Did that answer your question, Cindy?
Yeah, he just said it. It doesn't have anything.
It doesn't have anything to do with the damage, no.
No.
All right, there's been a motion made, seconded. We've had pretty good discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Nay, yeah, too. Nay, yeah, too.
Alright, so then I hit the vote, I'll say aye. Know that I want to.
I, I'm impressed with it, I'm impressed that it's that little, but I just, I don't vote for that type of government layer, so that's...
I understand that, where you're, where you're coming from.
But I am impressed that it's only, it's only that much, I really am.
Take a look at it in the, in the aspect of, if you don't do it, they are talking about, like...
Enforcing.
Well, yeah, enforcing.
In a certain way. Bring a big stick out.
Much.
Well, what scares me is that 15 years out.
Helps us get grants.
That concerns me.
Alright, moving very long, we have cemetery mowing bids, or I should say, a bid.
So, so we again, are we expecting more?
I sent it to five different companies last Monday, and so they had to be in by today and noon, and we only received one. But it has been like a lot of storm weather, so that could be why I did it delay.
We wanna put it up? Another twenty? If we do. We wanted it for budgeting purposes.
We wanted it for budgeting purposes.
That's true.
That is our current company, correct?
Well, there was a deadline put out, you didn't hear back.
That's true.
So do you want me to open this bid or not?
What happened to, you have to have three?
Pardon?
What happened to, the rule, you gotta have three?
If you can't get them.
If you can't get them, you can't get them. But it's been duly noted by the select man's admin clerk that she made the attempt, and this, and there was a deadline, and this is the only one that come into the deadline.
But Mike, there are...
I'll let the...
There are people that do mow, now I know the one that does Barbara Pratt is Johnson's, and they used to do Bridgetts in West Rattlin', and they lost it, and I mean, somebody like that might pick it up, but you might not know that they do cemeteries. I mean, how are these people that have done cemeteries know that there's a bid for this town possible for them?
You called five, right?
I called and emailed five.
Does a cemetery committee know who does the other cemeteries around here, and maybe I'll try to call them?
Those are the ones that Katie was instructed to call.
Okay, I didn't know that the cemetery, if like other cemeteries, you guys, if the cemetery committee got hold of all the other cemeteries and found out who was mowing their, their cemeteries.
Yeah, but it didn't get put out quick enough for it to be posted in the paper or anything either, it was just on a call basis.
I know we're looking for it to be taken care of for budget purposes, but I would recommend that it delay.
I'd table it. Alright. If you want that as a motion. Alright, I would, so that... I entertain a, or, I'm not... Make a motion. I'll make a motion that we table the mowing bid until we receive more bids.
But I would set a deadline on it, next meeting. If you're doing it for budget, you gotta have it for next meeting.
You're not gonna have it for, to complete the budget.
We won't.
I can tell you that right now, so you're gonna have to do your best guess based on what we have.
Yeah, but you're, the budget's not due until January whatever, and we're gonna have a budget meeting, and we can leave that one last line. Right?
Yeah.
Or half hour early on another night for that.
'Cause there's, what, our next meeting's the 23rd?
Right.
So you're gonna put that in your motion, that we've gotta make a decision on the 23rd?
23rd, we'll make a motion, or, yeah, make a decision.
I'll second it.
You have that?
Who's seconding, Robert? So do you want me to email them again saying it's gonna extend it, or reach out to more people, or...
How about both? Do you guys have recommendations?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call this people and just say there is a bid in Larnedon, and they're interested, put one in.
Thank you for the phone.
I'm contacting Katie, go.
I would, I would not go that route.
Not on paper?
No, it's too expensive, nobody reads the paper anymore.
Your Facebook page.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. Hometown does, and they do a lot of stuff like that, so, yeah.
But I would say as long as we do our due diligence, which you already technically have.
Yeah, well, we'd give it one more shot.
Post it on our website.
Yeah, Google on the website.
Yeah, okay.
Katie, bring that up to Gloria tomorrow, maybe, and just put it out there for the heck.
Alright, there's been a motion made, seconded, we've had lengthy discussion. All of them favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'm putting this all back in here, Katie, I'm putting it all back in there. The thingy. Alright. Katie, do you have anything you wanna report?
We met again for budget tonight, and our next budget meeting will be next Monday, December 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and it is a workshop that is open to the public.
Kelly, do you have anything you would like to report?
I actually attended a delinquent tax collector's workshop today this afternoon, I found that very helpful, so I'm hoping to move forward with some stuff that I learned and change up some of my processes a little.
Good. How long was the meeting for?
It was like three hours over in West Rattlin'.
It's like a little slumber.
No, but they did have a tax attorney, attorney come in who does a lot of the tax sales for a lot of towns in the south, and it was very, he's done it for a lot of years, so it was really very interesting of, he was giving real life scenarios of what's happened instead of really just, it wasn't as dry as I thought it was gonna be, so, it was fun.
Katie, do you have anything you'd like to add to any of the discussion tonight? Oh. Alright, Rick, we'll start at your end, do you have any concerns?
I am good.
Rob?
Do not.
Cash? I do have some concerns, we've had some snow events, snow storms, we're having quite a few people pushing snow across the road, which is totally illegal, with the possibility of fines, and the main thing is, when some of these people pushing across the road, they're leaving trails of snow in the road, and that creates quite a hazard, I just want the public to be aware of that.
I've told our guides to look out for that stuff, and I'll remind them.
Thank you.
Just let them know.
Do you have anything more?
Just a quick little thing, last Wednesday night, solid waste meeting, as usual, of course, there's still a lot of concern about this food waste thing coming up, how well it's gonna work, don't know. We looked at the budget, they prepared the budget, there's gonna be a public hearing on it, the 26th, which is a poor night for me, but that's what was decided on, and also, it was brought up and voted on, they've been sitting on a pretty good piece of money, about $300,000, so they have decided to give some back to the towns. Now, it will not be until after the first of the year, they run on the calendar year, and there were some figures passed around the other night, but all the towns were not involved at that time, and they didn't have true figures, so I don't think it'd be appropriate to say anything about figures at this point, because they've got to figure out the percentages, what it is, but whatever it is, it's certainly not gonna hurt us.
How would that come, Bob, in the form of a check?
Just in the form of a check, as far as I know, yes, it's gonna be...
Do they speculate as to what kind of a fee or sum it might be?
On coming back?
Yeah.
There was speculation, but it's so far out, they, they were lacking so much information that, at this point, I don't think they know, and so it's just as well not to say it to me.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep.
Don't wanna get somebody's hopes up on something and then find out that it didn't work.
Yep.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
Alright, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All of them favor?